All right, I'm going to call to order this city council meeting for March 10th, 2020. Thank you, Marie Maxey, for the prelude music. You did an awesome job.[14.12][14.12][applause] Tonight, we have our invocation provided by our city manager, Adams, followed by a flag salute by council member Nigar. Would you please stand?
If you please bow your head. Dear me, Father Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We thank you for Temecula and the city that it's become. We thank you for the privilege it is to serve as a local government agency. We ask for wisdom and discernment for this city council, for city staff. Lord, I pray for protection of our police and fire personnel. Pray for the people of Temecula, and the governance, and the democracy, and the business that's conducted this evening. And we thank you for this. And we give you glory and honor. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Please say with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right, Madam City Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here. All right, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do have public comments.
Okay. Let's see the video, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Warren. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on any item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Right. Just as a reminder, we have a lot of speakers, it sounds like. So, we're going to be adhering to the three-minute rule strictly. So, at three minutes, your mic will get cut off. And it's not because you're saying anything bad, it's just we've got to get through all these speakers in a timely manner. So, and please, if you're next in the queue, don't wait in your seat. Just kind of come up and sit in the front seat so you can pop right up, so we can keep it moving through as quickly as possible. So, first speaker, please.
The first speaker is Donna Cole, to be followed by Erin Combs.
Good evening.
Good evening. I didn't expect to be first.[222.34][222.34][laughing] I'm here to address the widening of Inez. I live on the corner, my name's Donna Cole. I live on the corner of La Paz and Inez at the roundabout. And I just have two questions. First of all, who in the room lives directly on Inez? Raise your hand, please. Who on the city council lives directly on Inez? Please raise your hand. Okay. With all the construction that we had with the roundabout, it was supposed to cut down on our traffic flow. I think that putting four lanes in is going to cause a worse problem. People are speeding now. I think if they have four lanes, two lanes each way, they're going to start speeding even more. Since the roundabout has started construction and to last weekend, we've had three accidents in the roundabout. First one was during construction. The lady went right through all the caution signs and landed where the horse would have been at that time. The second one was two weeks ago. We had a gentleman that was a little intoxicated, and he went through the entire roundabout, knocked the legs, the leg off the horse, and landed up in our yard. This is the second time we've had someone in our yard. Out of 11 accidents in two years. And the third one was the other day, we had a bicyclist hit by a car. Thank goodness, he was okay, but he was hit while he was in the roundabout. I just don't think the widening of Inez is going to serve a better purpose in controlling our traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Erin Combs, to be followed by Skylar Hahn.
Good evening. My name is Erin Combs. My wife Wendy and I are residents of Temecula, and we are also the ambassadors for USA Pickleball. So, we have a few of our pickleball players here in the audience, and our main purpose tonight is to come and say thank you to the city council and to the city for building our courts this year, last year. We really appreciate it. So...[392.52][392.52][applause] We also wanted to share a few pictures of things that are going on. I hope I did that right. The courts are being used pretty much seven days a week. The courts are being used pretty much seven days a week in the mornings and in the evenings. This is a picture. So, the four courts are in the background. They're full with 16 players, and we have 18 paddles waiting for the next games. We routinely have 30, 40, or more people there playing. This is another one of the pictures of the group of people waiting to play the next games. They've been very popular, very well received. In fact, starting this January, two months ago, the city started offering classes through the rec program. This is one of the classes being taught out there. And as far as I know, all the classes have been full, and we have waiting lists. So, we're excited to hopefully get more going in the future. There's a group of, one of our classes. Thank you. So, there's a lot of potential here. We've heard some things that the city may have in the future. So, we're here to thank you and offer our help if there's anything we can do to offer suggestions or advice. One of the more immediate needs that we have is some better lighting at Margarita Park on the pickleball courts would be good. The pickleball courts extend more out into the corners than the tennis courts do, and with some of the older players, they have a challenge seeing the lines and the courts at night. So, that would be a great help. Our Facebook group here in Temecula is approaching 500 members. We continue to have great interest, and it's just growing like crazy. And in our eyes, Temecula has a great opportunity to really do something great. There's not anything really big in the Southern California area, but there's a big demand for big tournaments, big events that could bring a lot of money and visitors into the city. So, we hope to be a part of that. If there's anything that we can do to help with that, and any plans the city may have, please reach out to us and let us know what we can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you.[533.32][533.48][applause]
The next speaker is Skylar Hahn, to be followed by Shaiman Flynn.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Stewart. My name is Skylar Hahn, and I currently serve as the president of the Heart of Temecula Leo Club. There is no doubt that we are living amidst a demanding, constantly developing, and innovative era. With new technological advancements coming forward by the day, there's often a sense of overwhelming stress burdening communities who simply want to keep up. Fortunately, our teens teaching tech program developed alongside the former founder and president Maddie Lascola Hutcherson, as well as Leo advisor Ms. Beth, have tactfully designed a way in which overlooked populations struggling with day-to-day technological issues have the opportunity to be taught by teens, 100% free of charge. Generation Z is most often stereotyped as the tech-dependent, tech-obsessed, and most narcissistic generation. However, I am proud to speak on behalf of the 26 members in our program, who are able to defy the many negative premonitions, and instead transform our well-versed technological capabilities as beneficial pieces of knowledge for those in need. From the start of my presidential term, I've had the honor of assisting and witnessing the commonalities between the everyday struggles of Temecula citizens. The plethora includes unsubscribing from spam emails, creating spreadsheets on Microsoft and Google servers, as well as being able to share and receive photos of family and friends. In hindsight, the hidden value behind the program's benefits are much greater. In fact, the beauty of the tech program lies within the amount of interconnected relationships which are able to become revitalized within a mere 10 to 15-minute interaction. In other words, in addition to the intimate bonds, teenagers in the program are able to merge between assisting varying generations. Struggling individuals are also able to experience a more positive correspondence with the advancements of technology. It is truly amazing to be able to contribute the affinity of bridging not only a generational gap, but also the chasm between individuals and their previous intimidations of the constant advancements of technology. With the support from the Heart of Temecula Leo Club and the city of Temecula, we've seen an exponential amount of growth developed within our program. The Leos have served over 200 citizens throughout the valley in a combination between our monthly venue held at the Ronald H. Roberts Library, as well as our affiliation with Alta Vista, a senior home in Riverside County. In short, on behalf of the Heart of Temecula Leo Club, I would like to express my sincerest and deepest gratitude for the city of Temecula's constant and most generous support. The opportunity has truly fueled the club's initiative to serve, educate, and inspire those in the community. We'd also like to present... ...good gratitude, and also...
All right, next speaker, please.[745.54][745.54][applause]
Next speaker is Shaiman Flynn, to be followed by Clayton Lisk.
I don't think I can beat them.
Right?[753.52][753.52][laughing]
Hi, I'm Shannon Flynn. I appreciate your time tonight, city council members. I live on Cabrillo Avenue, and we moved here in 2011. And we moved here because we really enjoyed having a rural community, but yet close access to the highway, and a lovely, real downtown. And I'm very upset about the proposed widening to Inez. I know it's not a new project, but I really think it should be reviewed. So, currently, the bottleneck is more towards the Duck Pond, and the first phase doesn't even address that. Secondly, the speed limit seems to be quite fast. People have a hard time getting in and out of their driveways, and a lane was added to enable egress and ingress into their driveways. And it's basically become a freeway passing lane, where people will zoom past you at 60 or 70 miles an hour. I think there's lots of traffic studies that show that if you provide more access for cars, you're going to get more cars. And it's not an area where there should be a lot of emissions pollution and everything because of the animals and children there. So, again, I'm against it, and I appreciate your time and listening to us. Thank you.
All right.
Next speaker is Clayton Lisk, to be followed by Louis Todd.
Hello, city council. My name's Clayton Lisk, and I live at 29835 Vallejo Avenue in Temecula, which is right off the Inez. I'm opposed as well to the widening of Inez. We have enough traffic as it is. It's hard for me to get out onto Inez, whether I'm taking a right turn or a left turn because of constant traffic out there. And we moved here because my younger daughter has expressed an interest in riding horses, and she's been taking lessons for over a year now. And I don't want to endanger my daughter by adding more traffic to this already congested area. So, I'm very opposed to the widening of Inez. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.[887.46][887.46][applause]
Next speaker is Louis Todd, to be followed by Mark Laterno.
Mayor, members of the council. My name's Louis Todd. My wife and I moved here in 1986, 34 years ago. And we both work here in town. I own a small manufacturing business over in the industrial park. We're not in support of the widening on Inez. We live in Los Ranchitos on Deportola Road. And we chose to live here just because of the quality of life. And what we've seen in terms of changes have been horrific. It's very difficult to get in and out of our driveway. We have a horse crossing next to our property, and it is unsafe. You cannot take your horse onto the street and get across, even if you see a car coming down the hill. It is that unsafe. And so, I've reviewed the Temecula general plan and the circulation element, and what it says is, is back in 1989, the citywide road network was incomplete. Gaps in the road network forced through traffic onto local streets. Higher traffic volumes and excessive speeds generated numerous complaints and requests for city action. Since that time, the city's road network has undergone significant improvements, however, continue to improve local circulation. New internal connecting routes are required in some areas to maximize the capacity. What it does say here is that these enhancements to the local road network should be balanced, right? Should be balanced with the need to minimize outside traffic through local streets that provide driveway access to single-family residences. Los Ranchitos is single-family residences. Furthermore, the widening is deemed under the modified secondary arterial. What does that mean? You know, what's the definition? To understand what it means is you need to really look up what a secondary arterial is to begin with, which is a four-lane roadway without medians. That's what we see on the plans that are projected. Four lanes, no median. What it does say in the standards is, is that direct access from private residential properties should be avoided where possible unless medians can be provided at such access points. That would mean in front of everybody's driveway, we'd need to have a median with a turn-in. The proposed widening does not show or provide a median. So, based upon the standard for widening to four lanes, it would be inconsistent with your plan, your circulation element, and therefore should not be approved. I apologize. I lost my train of thought. So, I'm confident if you were to ask any neighbor in the city of Temecula how they would feel about putting four lanes in front of their property with a speed limit of four...
Yeah. Thank you, though.[1083.58][1083.58][applause]
Next speaker is Mark Laterno, to be followed by Amy Natus.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Mark Laterno, and I'm here tonight representing my family, who live with me at 30425 Jedediah Smith Road in beautiful, lovely Temecula. We're opposed to any projects which result in the further widening of Inez or Deportola roads between Santiago and Margarita Road. We are also against increased posted speed limits, and hope you would consider, in fact, reducing the speed limits along Inez and Deportola roads. In spring of 2000, the United States Marine Corps transferred my family and me from northern Japan to Camp Pendleton. In our search for our new home, we visited the areas adjacent to Camp Pendleton, and we spent a week looking in Orange County, North San Diego County, and we chose our home in Temecula because of the old traditions and new opportunities which we could feel in this community. We knew we had found our forever home. My wife and I were both born in California, as were our parents, and we've lived in Temecula longer than we've lived anyplace else. As I retired from an exciting career as a United States Marine, I started a small business in Temecula, and we employ several of Temecula Valley community neighbors. Weekdays at 5:30, when Dad and I are driving down Inez Road heading to the gym, we are often passed by people driving at speeds above 50, 60, and 70 miles an hour, who are in a rush to join the daily migration towards San Diego. Later in the day, people honk their horn and wave fingers at us for pulling out of our driveway or slowing to turn into our driveway, which is less than 200 feet from an four-way, all-stop intersection. It's clear that they are frustrated that I am interfering with their right to speed through our neighborhoods and through our communities. With increased traffic comes more pollution. Of course, I'm talking about trash and traffic noises, as well as the frequent sirens, and consider the safety issues for runners, walkers, cyclists, and those folks on horseback. People traveling in and through our community are already driving faster than the posted 40 or 45 mile an hour speed limits, and you already know that creating a wider thoroughfare will only encourage an increased speed, frequency, and the lethality of accidents, which result in injuries and death, as happened to Mr. Creed, the San Diego County Sheriff's Deputy, who died in a single-vehicle accident on Deportola Road on a clear Saturday morning in January, just two short months ago. "Old traditions and new opportunities" is a great slogan, and the connection to our past is as equally as important as our bridge to the future. Please, council members, I implore you to protect our homes, our Los Ranchitos community, our equine traditions, our properties' values, and our city's history and heritage for the enjoyment of the citizens of this great city of Temecula today and in the future. Please, please protect our quality of life. [inaudible] Protect our old traditions and new opportunities. We oppose any widening of Inez and people of those roads, and oppose any increase in the [inaudible].
Thank you.[1285.02][1285.02][applause]
Next speaker is Amy Natus, to be followed by Donna and Jerry Levitt.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Natus, and I live in the Los Ranchitos community also. I'm one of the avid horse riders in the area, and I've lived everywhere from, you know, Newport Beach in Orange County to a farm town in Virginia that didn't have a stoplight. So, I picked Temecula because it was a perfect balance of being, you know, in a city, but still being able to enjoy, you know, this western way of life. And it just seemed like a really special town to me. So, it still is. However, I'm out on these roads probably five days a week with the horses, and it can be a little hairy. You know, I have had some very close calls, some very near accidents crossing. We actually have two major crossings on Inez Road that our trail system connects to if you want to get all the way around the loop. And then we have some on side streets which have really poor visibility also. And mainly, I think that it would be very, very difficult to get across Inez Road if it is widened to four lanes. I also have some pretty big concerns about our residents pulling out across Inez Road. When we're coming out with a rig and a four-horse trailer from our own driveway, and we're trying to get across just two lanes of traffic, it can be very difficult. We can't jump on the gas. We can't whip out in between traffic. So, I feel like if we're dealing with all of this coming through, you know, a rural, zoned, horse, and equestrian neighborhood, it's going to be a lot of accidents, and it could be very bad for a lot of people. I also just think that... I think it really isn't going to be, it's not going to have the style that we love about our town. And, you know, we're right up the street from Old Town, and as far as, you know, preserving our western way of life and having, you know, families, they always stop and wave. They like to see the horses. I just think that we're going to lose our trail system, and we're going to lose our horse trails, and it's just going to be really difficult if this road is actually widened to four lanes. And I don't believe that it is actually going to do anything worthy to decrease the traffic problem. I think that widening it to four lanes is actually just going to bring more people through. And I think it would just be really nice if we could kind of keep our little area through our neighborhood small and passable for all of our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you.[1439.84][1439.84][applause]
Next speaker is Donna and Jerry Levitt, to be followed by Neil Ziff.
Good evening, city council members. My husband and I moved here in the year 2000, so we've been here 20 years. We moved here because over the years, we've had horses, and we loved the rural life. We live directly on Inez Road, 2999 Inez Road. And, well, for example, every weekend, just the trash. I have a huge trash bag. I have to go out and pick up trash. I was mowing and edging last weekend with my mower and everything. It was scary. It was very scary. We tried just to pull into our driveway on our side of the road. I started at the first property, the property next door to us, put my signal on, then I put my brakes on. You know, I give them plenty of notice. And then when we slow down, yeah, people will honk. They will give you the finger. They will speed around you. It's so dangerous. My husband, last week, was bringing the trailer home. So, he had to go across the street to get into our driveways, but he had to pull off the road because of the traffic. I stood at our driveway. He got out of his truck. We had to try and slow people down so he could pull into our own property. People come to our house. They used to back out, you know, under the road like normal people. It's like, no, no, you turn around before you go out. The speed limit is ridiculous, 45. We went to Beaumont last week. We came off the freeway into the city, four lanes, 35 right away. We're residential. We're an equestrian community. That's why we live there, for the quietness. It's our sanctuary. This is our home. We don't want it to be a freeway. We don't want it widened. We don't need it. It's scary enough as it is. So, please, please, thank you. Don't do it, please. Thank you.
Thank you.[1544.62][1544.62][applause]
Next speaker is Neil Ziff, to be followed by Lee Rosu.
Mayor, council members, and staff, my name is Neil Ziff, and I have lived at 43801 Coronado Drive for 20 years. I'm here tonight to speak against the plan to widen Inez between Santiago and La Paz. I'm addressing you both as a resident and also as a board member of the Los Ranchitos HOA. Our association is the oldest in Temecula and truly represents what is stated in our city motto, "Old traditions." Along the approximate two and a half miles of Inez and Deportola within our community, there is direct connection of 56 primary driveways, 17 secondary driveways, and six horse crossings. There is frequent ingress and egress of horse trailers. There is no other stretch of residential roadway within our city anything like this. We are truly unique. This corridor is also popular with cyclists and sightseers. What a shame it would be to sacrifice the safety and enjoyment of this area to an invitation of greater traffic volumes and speed. In the 2019 city publication of Inside Temecula, in the section dealing with questions about Interstate 15, it is stated, quote, "That 66 to 71% of vehicles traveling on Interstate 15 do not originate, stop, or end in Temecula, and are not attributable to Temecula in any way, including its businesses, homes, or tourism destination," end quote. "Since the adoption of the current general plan in 2005, wherein the widening, wherein the widening of Inez and Deportola is designated, there have been significant changes in population, circulation, and technologies not anticipated at that time. Navigation apps such as Waze and Google Maps did not exist, but now direct drivers to get off the I-15 mess and take alternative routes." Does that mean that at peak hours, 66 to 71% of the traffic through our neighborhood does not belong to Temecula? We don't know that, and that is the problem. But it does mean that detailed studies such as origination and destination need to be made before such a drastic measure is taken, which will inextricably change the very nature of our community. It does mean that by widening, even more commuters using these apps will be directed here. There are some large circulation projects on the calendar which might very well influence the issue of the need to widen Inez and Deportola between Santiago and Margarita. These include, but are not limited to, the Winchester Flyover, the Date Street Bridge, the widening of Inez from Santiago to the Duck Pond, and the Western Bypass. There are many traffic engineering concepts and studies which speak to the counterintuitive consequences of widening traffic corridors. This is an issue which is far greater than commuter convenience. It highlights the delicate balance of community appreciation and enjoyment with circulation challenges. Ideally, we would like to see a change to the general plan. At the very least, we are asking that the widening of Inez between Santiago and La Paz be delayed until such time as these other projects have been completed and their effects can be studied. We are asking the council to work with our community in a creative and collaborative fashion, and we are asking that you work with...
Thank you.[1746.62][1746.62][applause]
Next speaker is Lee Rosu, to be followed by Tanis Earl.
Good evening. I'm a Los Ranchitos resident as well, and I'm here to state my position as being against the widening of Inez. Speed limits is the first concern. Traffic through the neighborhood being unable, even as it is, to get out of our property. Expanding or widening Inez will validate our community as a bypass, official bypass for a freeway. This is just unacceptable. I'm begging you to help us preserve the way of life. Thank you.
Thank you.[1787.11][1787.11][applause]
Next speaker is Tanis Earl, to be followed by Timothy Elfit.
My name is Tanis Earl, and I live at 43740 Cajon Drive...
My name is Tanis Earl, and I live at 43740 Cajon Drive in the historic equestrian neighborhood of Los Ranchitos, Temecula. Good evening, mayor, members of council, staff, neighbors, and fellow equestrians. I'm here tonight regarding a matter which is not formally on tonight's agenda. That's PW-17-17, Inez Road Improvements. I specifically chose to make Los Ranchitos equestrian neighborhood my home over any other neighborhood in the city of Temecula because I am an equestrian. I frequently ride the Los Ranchitos Trail System, which includes the multiple designated horse crossing intersecting Inez Road between Santiago Road and Jedediah Smith Road. I'm a member of Rancho California Horsemen Association, who, as you know, has worked closely with Riverside County for several years to pursue, preserve, and improve trail safety. Our most recent victory, the multiple flashing horse crossing beacons in Wine Country. These became critical for safety due to the increase of traffic and the increase of traffic speeds. I'm joined here tonight by members of RCHA. Thank you. I am also a board member of the Temecula Equine Riders, who are also here tonight in support of our neighborhood. The Temecula Equine Riders, with your generous support, financial contributions, and actual in-the-wagon participation proudly represented Temecula at this year's Pasadena Rose Parade. You helped us promote our mission, which includes creation and preservation of trail safety, safe riding trails, and the equestrian rural lifestyle, which is a vital element of Temecula's heritage. It's what sets us apart. Last summer, together, we celebrated the new roundabout on La Paz Road dedicated to Jack Williams. I wonder what he would say if he were here today. Mayor and council members, I read your online bios this afternoon. You each have a list of items important to you in serving your constituents, the citizens of Temecula. Among them include common sense development, public traffic safety, advocate for trails, carefully planned growth, quality of life. With those key objectives in mind, I ask that you please reevaluate the plan to widen Inez Road to four lanes and take into consideration the unquestionable resulting destruction to one of Temecula's most unique and beautiful neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Timothy Elphet, to be followed by Gina Elphelt.
Good evening, city council members and city officials. And I just want to thank you all for your service. I know a lot of you have been at this for a long time, and the problems aren't easy. I'm also a resident of Los Ranchitos, and I moved from Meadowview in 1990 to Los Ranchitos because I wanted to be at a horse property. And we bought horses, and my daughters grew up with that. And one of the things we enjoyed most was doing the loop around Los Ranchitos. And I don't know if any of you remember Colonel Roerbach, or I know you remember Jack Williams, but these men loved those trails, and they lived for these trails. They fought for these trails. Colonel Roerbach marked the trails, and we rode a lot back years ago. And right now, the trail crosses Inez in between Santiago and La Paz, and it is dangerous. We ride it often, and sometimes we wait up to five minutes until somebody sees us and slows down. And I think if we change this to a four-lane highway, the loop will be gone. Nobody will ride it anymore because it's just will be too hard to cross Inez. And I didn't sign up to talk here. My wife signed me up, but I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Gina Elphelt, to be followed by Rudy Canales.
Hi, I'm Gina Elphelt, Dr. Elphelt's wife. And we do enjoy the trails. And you know, some of the things I think about selling real estate here in 21 years, he talked about moving from Meadowview, and I think about Cali Pino Colada, how you guys put speed bumps and did things because that was...people were cutting through to get to Meadowview, and you took that away. We need this preserved. If you do double lane, maybe just do it so it goes up to Santiago Road and doesn't cut through, so they have to slow down. It's our homeowner's association. All of you probably live in some kind of association. We need protection. It's not fair. We spend a lot of money in these homes. They're not cheap homes. We have our farm animals. It's our little ranch. Our grandkids love to come. We like to take our grandkids. One of Jack Williams' last rides was with me and Amy, who spoke earlier, and he would be devastated with the thought of this going on. So I just plead with you guys is just protect us and our HOA. And it might not mean something to you, but it means a lot to us. And so we're here today to fight for that, and I do believe we deserve that. So just reiterating what everyone else said, but thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rudy Canales, to be followed by Desmond Slusher.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you guys. We've been in Temecula for over 20 years. We live off of Deportola Road, and my dad bought the property. He passed away about six years ago. And so we've been, as a family, trying to keep the property afloat. But I'm here because I'm against the widening of the four lanes on Deportola Road. In January, my wife was making a left-hand turn at 5:00 in the afternoon to come into our driveway and was rear-ended by someone doing sixty-five miles an hour and just blasted our car. To be honest with you, if that didn't happen, maybe I don't come up here. But I felt like I needed to talk about that because she's been in therapy for the last three months with shoulder and back problems. And, you know, there's six of us that live on the property, so six of us are going out, six of us are coming in all day long, and we get honked at, we hear skid marks. And when that accident happened, I happened to be home. I ran out there to help, and people on that road would slow down and then speed right back up, and they didn't care, you know? I sit at my front door, and I watch people go by, and I could literally count hundreds and hundreds of cars go by in less than five minutes. It's scary going out the driveway. It's scary coming in the driveway. And I know that more traffic is just going to make this thing worse. And, you know, I know we have the option to move, but our family's been here for 20 years. My dad worked his whole life to buy this property, and we want to be here. We just ask the same, to please protect the residents that are there versus just adding more cars on the road to appease people that are literally just passing by. And they don't have a vested interest in who lives there. And, I mean, why should you get honked or skid or have...get hit by another car just trying to go home? Please do what you can for us. I appreciate that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Next speaker is Desmond Slusher, to be followed by Paul Jakutis.
Good afternoon. Good evening. I feel a little bit out of place coming up here after the previous speakers and the issues they're dealing with. We're here again on the pickleball forum. We just want to, again, express our gratitude, our thanks. My daughter and my family and I moved from Chicago three years ago, and I must say that we were out at the Margarita Park trying to go play some tennis with her and ran into Mr. Combs and his wife Wendy. He introduced us to this pickleball game, and we have been hooked ever since. My daughter and I have been playing some tournaments. She went on ahead and played down at the Margarita Indian Wells Tournament and won some medals. And we really just enjoy the fact that we have this sport that we can play here. You guys did an awesome job in giving us what you gave us so far. We love it. We appreciate it, and we're just here to say thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul Jakutis, to be followed by Stacy Jakutis.
Council members, Mayor Stewart, thank you for the opportunity to talk. I want to talk to you guys as a father. I live on Inez. I'm afraid to let my kids play in the front yard. Police cars, vehicles, trash have been on my front yard in accidents. Do you have that fear when you go home, that you're going to have a car in your yard? Maybe one of your children are dead, your grandchildren? This is serious business. This isn't just traffic in and out of our neighborhood. These are our family members. This is no joke to us. I hope you guys take this as serious as we do and protect us. We need it. I couldn't imagine putting this on your shoulders if one day I come back here to say, look what happened. We've already had one death of a poor police officer. Imagine his family, forty-five miles an hour in a residential community? It is unacceptable. Three lanes right now. I can't pull in and out of there with my trailer without being beeped at, swore at, swerved around. It is unbearable. This place is unsafe, and to make it four lanes? They think it's a raceway now. We're only going to cause more damage to people rather than worrying about the traffic. Please just consider us when this goes forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stacy Jakutis, to be followed by Jim Dykma.
You just heard from my husband. I'm here to actually speak on behalf of a gentleman who couldn't be here this evening, Ron Barker. He lives on Inez and has been here for a little over a year, purchased his home specifically to race horses and have his grandchildren come. I think you've heard it from almost all of us. And he's just asking that we...that you consider not widening the road as well. He has a picture, and I don't know if you can just set a picture there, but this is just an example of what recently happened to his mailbox at, I think he said it was 5:00 in the evening, and a person driving by that was a concrete...I think you can read concrete mailbox that was over 1,000 pounds, and it was just demolished. So you can get an idea of how fast people are traveling to be able to do something like that. I think you've heard from all of us. We're playing on your heartstrings to understand if this was your neighborhood, what would you want for your family? Please think that. Think about that as you make this decision and consider changing the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Dykma, to be followed by the final speaker, Israel Gutierrez, M.D.
Good evening. I'm Jim Dykma. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Well, I retired after 35 years in the military to Temecula because we liked it. It was a horse community. I do have horses, and I try to...when I ride, I try to cross Inez and between Santiago and La Paz. It is dangerous. If you try to cross anywhere across on La Paz, it's dangerous. There's no place that they don't...they slow down. And then, I live on Vallejo, which is just off La Paz behind Inez. Okay, they're using that for a freeway to bypass the roundabout. And I feel that if you add lanes, you add traffic. It's like if you build it, they will come. And it's out of control right now. I also have a four-horse trailer. Trying to turn onto Inez from Vallejo is very problematic. Just to find a spot to go is fine, but then people are driving so fast, they run right up on you. Okay, I have horses in there. I care for those horses. I don't want to see them killed by some out-of-control driver because the speed limit is out of control on Inez, and there's no enforcement there. And if you have four lanes, you just have more traffic. So I would appreciate it if you do not add two more lanes to Inez. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Final speaker is Israel Gutierrez, M.D.
Good evening, city council and Mayor Stewart. I moved from my family recently, about three years ago, from the Bay Area, escaping the development, escaping the technology, and escaping the biotech industry that follows me around everywhere. But I wanted to make sure I went and I came here. You know, I've been able to leave anywhere else in the world where I chose. I chose Temecula. I chose Temecula because of the heritage, because of the people, and because we fit in. So I'm concerned about the widening of Inez. I live right on Inez and La Paz. You heard from all the other neighbors and friends about the accidents that are happening, the speed. But I'm also a horse rider. I'm a person who stays in the house. I had to change my trailer because now with the roundabout, I cannot get out of my own property. So I had to literally dismantle the horse trailer to be able to move it out. So that's unacceptable. But it's unacceptable, too, that people are not aggressive, is that widening the street or widening Inez is not safe for the kids. My kids go to school three blocks away, and they cannot walk to school. Why? Because we don't have sidewalks. We don't have fences or anything that will protect the sidewalks from the street. You know, I'm often envious of the Norco community where they can go on horse trail everywhere. They can go to the pharmacy. They can go to the shops. They can go back to the neighborhoods. I'm also envious of Rancho Cucamonga, who planned very well horse trails and bike trails right next to each other, being able to go for miles without seeing traffic. And I wonder if this widening of the street should be widened, but should be widened not for the traffic, but should be widened to allow sidewalks, so that horse trails, so bike trails, where our community can walk to Old Town Temecula, which is so close, but we cannot...we don't feel safe walking through it. I think that it should be widened, but it should be widened with the people who live there in mind as opposed to the traffic that passes by. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that's the end of the public comments. Okay, so I'm going to move on to council reports. Do any of my colleagues have a report?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I see a lot of people leaving who spoke. Do you mind if I go first?
Sure.
Because I'll speak on the issue. Mr. City Manager, could you...I think there may be a shortage of information being disseminated or some misinformation regarding the widening of Inez and all of the aspects of the project and what's going to be considered and why it's being done and how it's going to impact and a whole bunch of things. Can you prepare an information sheet and make that information sheet available to anybody who wishes it? And so if you spoke here tonight and you want to get that information, we'll prepare a comprehensive sheet for you. Then I'd like to do something else, okay? As speakers indicated, this isn't on our agenda tonight because it's not on the agenda. We're prohibited from addressing it, and that's why I didn't really ask any questions while the speakers were coming up. The council can't do that unless it's an agenda item. But as this gets closer to being considered, okay? Right now, it's...I don't even know if we're going to look at it this year. When do we expect to do something?
It's only 60% designed, so it's still got another year left.
Yeah. And so why I'm glad everybody came, there's a lot of information and a project that's only 60% designed. So everything that you just said, let me tell you, duly noted, okay? And it has to be addressed, and we will. If when we get close to the design and the information sheet is out there, if the community desires to have an information session here in city council chambers, then let's do that as well. But let's do it at a time where the information will be fresh, and then we can have everybody participate. It'll be informal, not a council session, and we can have questions and answers, and it'll be very...just very Los Ranchitos-like. How about that? Okay? All right. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Swin.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Stu. I just have a slide I'd like to show tonight. I really want to highlight our Adopt a Park program and the success that we've seen with this. So we started with an idea, and we've, at this point, have 12 park and trail adoptions. And the reason I sort of bring this forward tonight is, you know, I think we gravitate towards our parks, but we have a trail system that is in much need of some love. So I want to encourage folks to consider adopting some trails. Our family's been involved personally, and we're out there cleaning a section of Santa Gortius Creek Park. It's just a really great way for our community to get involved. It can be families. It can be nonprofits, organizations, businesses. There's no limit to this. So I really wanted to just bring this forward just as a tickler for folks out there watching tonight and thinking about getting involved and ways to get involved. So you can visit the website, or you can call TCSD to get a packet and sign up to Adopt a Park or a Trail. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. We're on to the consent calendar. Next, we have the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes for February 25, 2020. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, adopt ordinance 2020-20, amending the 2019 building... Number four, adopt ordinance 2020-20, amending the 2019 Building Code Second Reading. Item number five, approve sponsorship agreement with Reality Rally, Inc. for the 2020 Reality Rally at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Stewart and Mayor Protem Edwards. Number six, approve sponsorship agreement with JDS Creative Academic...
Academy.
Academy for the 2020 Digifest at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Stewart and Mayor Protem Edwards. Number seven, approve license agreement with the Temecula Valley Unified School District for use of city real property for contractor storage yard. Number eight, approve the extension of joint use agreement with the Temecula Valley Unified School District for Temecula Elementary School and Chaparral High School. Number nine, accept improvements and file notice of completion for pavement rehabilitation citywide, Maraga Road, Yukon Road, and La Serena Way, PW 19-06. Can I have...
Move consent.
Second.
I have a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Could I ask for clarification just for the public, for my participation on items number seven and eight, dealing with the school district?
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I've spoken with councilmember Edwards and there is no conflict of interest because the department she works for, the school district, is not involved in these projects.
Thank you, Peter.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. I will recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meeting of Temecula Community Services District, the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, and the Housing, Temecula Housing Authority, and the Temecula Public Finance Authority.
Thank you, Mayor Stu. I will call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please note that we are all still present. Do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and dispense with the reading of the rules and move on to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 10, approve action minutes of February 25th, 2020. Item number 11, approve the extension of joint use agreements with Temecula Valley Unified School District for Temecula Middle School and James L. Day Middle School.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and vote. And that passes 5-0, thank you. We'll go ahead and look to our Director of Community Services for a report.
Mr. President, Commissioner Levine will actually cover our items under commission reports a little later, so that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. General Matters Report?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Any Board of Directors' reports? I have one slide under this item. So again, we hosted, I believe it's the fourth annual, yeah, the Fourth Annual Celebration of American Black History. It was quite an impactful evening. The Voices of Our City Choir is a choral group in San Diego that is comprised of people experiencing homelessness. It was quite impressive to see this and the house was brought down. I mean, it was, people were on their feet, people were certainly enjoying themselves and just getting a taste of some American black history. So I just wanted to bring this forward. It's going to obviously continue. This is a wonderful event. Director Hawkins, please let everyone know, especially over at the theater and at the museum, the hard work they put in to make this happen, so we appreciate that. All right, thank you. All right, I will go ahead and adjourn to our next meeting, March 24th, 2020. We're adjourned.
All right, I will call to order the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, we're still here. Any public comments?
No, we don't.
All right, so I'll move on to the consent calendar. Next, we have the SARDA Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number 12, approve action minutes of February 25th, 2020.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. And that passes 5-0. Executive Director Report?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Any Board Members' Reports? Nope. I will adjourn the SARDA meeting and move on to a joint meeting of the Temecula Finance Authority and the City Council. Madam Clerk, we're all still here. Public comments? Do we have any public comments?
No, we don't.
No public comments. All right, we're on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Public Financing Authority request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Item number 13, approve deposit agreement and initiate Community Facilities District formation proceedings related to the Heirloom Farms Development. Yes, Mr. Schwank.
Didn't want to interrupt you. I just have a brief question. If I need to pull the item, I will.
No, go for it.
That's okay. Okay. Mr. City Manager, I'm just curious, is this something, are we putting the cart before the horse, if you will? I see, you know, we're working through a process to sort of do a residential overlay, but we're seeing the formation of a CFD. Could I get a little clarification?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. The optics of it might suggest that this is in wrong order, but actually the financing folks, the financing team associated with this land use change that has yet to come to the city council needed the extra time. And so they have requested the city council, at their risk, consider the formation of the CFD. You are in no way binding the city council or the city to a future land use policy decision. That will come much later when it's ready.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Good question.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, so do we have an executive director report?
Nothing tonight.
And anything from the Board of Directors?
No.
Okay, I will adjourn the TPFA and go on and reconvene the Temecula City Council. Okay, today we have a public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or appear at and be heard in support or opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you'll be limited to raising only the question or only the issues you or someone else raised at a public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item number 14, introduce ordinance amending Title 17 and Title 18 of the Temecula Municipal Court related to small cell wireless facilities located within the public right-of-way and adopt resolution regarding an updated policy for small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, long-range planning application number LR 19-0498. Could I have a staff report, please?
Good evening, City Council. Tonight, I'm here to present on small cell wireless facilities. So why are we here? Well, in 2018, the FCC declared a ruling that became effective in January 2019. That ruling was designed to expedite the 5G fifth-generation cellular networks specifically located within the public right-of-way. These 5G networks are envisioned to improve technologies such as autonomous vehicles, next-generation technologies for public safety, and other economic development opportunities. And that FCC ruling also created new time limits for small cell site approvals, limited fees that the local municipalities can charge, and curb the ability of cities to regulate certain design requirements. So what are small cells? This is an example of small cell or something similar to what a small cell would look like off of Wolf, the Wolf Creek community. So it's located on an existing light pole and you'll see that there's an antenna structure on top of the light pole. This is in contrast to what a macro site or a larger cellular site looks like. It's on a very large pole that can be substantially taller and there's many antennas on it. So what's the difference between these macro cells and small cells besides their height? Well, this is an aerial image of the mall and a macro cell could cover the entire mall. And using what's called high or medium band, or low or medium band spectrum, they can provide certain data and speeds to the entire mall area with one tower. Again, that's what that macro site looks like. A small cell, on the other hand, it uses lower band of frequencies and there's many more cell sites needed, these small cell sites are needed. But the positive aspect of that is they can provide a lot more data, so similar to what your existing home internet connection would be. Again, that's what a small cell would be similar, would look like. So what is the city doing to address these FCC rulings? Well, again, in 2019, we adopted an urgency ordinance to address the small cells in the public right-of-way. And we also adopted a city council policy for small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. So there's two things, this ordinance and then this policy. After that, the city contracted with Telcom Law Firm, they are experts in this, they do this all the time, and we consulted with them to receive several recommendations. One of those recommendations was to, of course, relocate the small wireless facilities from the planning code of our municipal code to the public works code because we're treating these more like a utility. This allows us to accommodate the large influx in applications we expect to receive. From that previous image, you'll see there's many more towers needed in a larger area and so we'll need hundreds of these sites in order to accommodate these next-generation networks. We also have very stringent approval timeframes that the federal government has established for us. These include 60- and 90-day approval requirements. So for the proposed small cell wireless facility, our consult recommended a few things. We updated our objective design standards for public right-of-way cell sites, includes things around size, height, material, and co-location when feasible. Again, these all have to meet the federal government's FCC's ruling standards. We also ensured that there's protections for decorative light poles such as those in Old Town, Harveston, and Wolf Creek. And we also wanted to protect aesthetics in other ways such as lighting, colors, anti-graffiti coatings, and other things related to that. Finally, we also include in this policy a pre-approved design, so if someone comes up with a fantastic, fantastic design that should be used over and over again, we want to make sure that we're expediting the process for them. So again, for tonight's city council action, we would, again, adopt the ordinance amending Title 17 and Title 18 of the Temecula Municipal Code. These amendments would relocate language related to small cells from Title 17 to 18. Additionally, the city council could adopt a resolution that would update the city council's policy on small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. And again, these are mandated by the federal government. Finally, the Planning Commission on February 5th, 2020, recommended adoption of these proposed changes. In terms of SEQA, under the California Environmental Quality Act, this project has been deemed categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 1506-1B3. And with that, staff's recommending that the city council adopt their proposed ordinance and resolution with the policy. And if you have any questions, staff and our consultant are available to answer questions.
Thank you. So what you're saying, this is federally mandated, we don't even have a choice in this, correct?
That is correct, Mayor Stu.
Okay, perfect. Yes?
Couple, couple of quick questions. Thanks for the report. I also like how the telecom sort of jumped over all the legislation that was being proposed in Sacramento and went straight to the federal government and thereby bypassing any local control that we had remaining on citing these. So that's fantastic. But off the soapbox, power usage on the poles, how do we manage that? Because they're obviously going to need that.
Yeah, and Pat may be able to step in and answer that. These use kind of like a shared power pole agreement. Some may use a direct meter where they're being pulled on it, but they have these special agreements through the CPUC where they're able to utilize the poles. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Yeah, the, their proposal has been to attach these to our streetlight poles and our streetlight poles are un-metered. So we pay Edison a flat rate for our streetlight poles. Edison actually has a tariff or a rate for these wireless facilities that would be attached to the streetlight poles. So they'll take their power from the streetlight pole and then pay Edison a flat rate for that.
Okay, so it doesn't impact us. Then, following that, most of the large cell sites have backup battery in case power outages. What's the plan on small cell sites?
That would be up to the individual carriers and whoever, whatever operator would do it, you know, would do that. I'm guessing that they wouldn't have any type of generators because of the physical size of these and limitations associated with that. And again, those macro sites provide large coverage areas whereas these small sites are smaller coverage but higher speeds.
So in a, in the optic of community resilience, if we have, you know, whether it's the PSPS program or some other reason why our power shuts down, then our communications shut down as well. That's not obviously a great place for businesses or residents, but a lot of our first responders are also using cellphone communications as well. And so what I'm hearing through this is that, you know, our community resilience is decreased with an increase in 5G capabilities.
Yeah, that's one aspect.
Is that a fair...
Well, there's, I would like to add something to that. We've been in conversations with the carriers for a number of different things over the last couple of years and they did say that they would be willing to place, you know, essentially batteries, battery-operated 5G in specific areas of importance like next to a fire station or next to City Hall. Now, we can't mandate that at this point, but they did say that they were willing to entertain that kind of situation and facility.
But any battery they're going to put in or on the pole is going to be extremely limited in its service to that pole. So not to necessarily get us in a fight with the FCC at this point, but, you know, this is a, this is a huge risk that nobody's really talked about at all with regard to these infrastructure upgrades that are bypassed all of our local control. So anyway, I'll, those are, those are all my questions. I'll leave my comments then for after.
Yeah, think of it like a layer cake. This isn't, one cell site's not going to be servicing an area, it's a layer cake of different sites, so there should be some redundancy.
Anything else? All right, thank you. So, well, let's open up the public hearing. All right, do we have any comments?
We do not.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And, all right, so any question, or any comments from the council? Yes?
This is one of those things where we don't really like what we have to do, but we have to do it anyway. And so really, nothing prohibits these poles from being located anywhere. That means my front yard, your front yard, I mean, pretty much any place. So there's really nothing we can do about it at this point, but we'll be watching continuously and as has been commented on, we will be maintaining constant communication with the providers to see what kind of concessions, if any, we can get out, you know, get from them in this situation. So thanks for your understanding.
Yes.
So I likely will vote no against this just on principle, but, but I'd like to see us maybe revisit this and in particular with an eye toward public safety and communications. You know, I think what's happening here is we're, you know, unless we have, and I understand the layer cake, you know, issue and unless, you know, one of the consultants wants to speak to this, if we still don't have a communications backbone supported by, you know, larger-scale battery or other backup, generator backup, then my concern, and I haven't seen this addressed at all, is whether or not our communications are still active. And with more residents and businesses opting out of having, you know, the traditional landline and using cell phones, that places larger and larger percentages of our community at risk. So I don't know if you could speak to that, but I'd like to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Tripp May. I'm the managing partner of Telcom Law Firm and I'm your consultant. To answer your question, if you're mostly concerned about redundancy in the network, then you focus on the macro cells. They provide the umbrella coverage... They provide the umbrella coverage. Those low band frequencies go really far, and they carry voice and text really well. So first responders use those. They're the sites that stay up when the power goes down. Small cells, they go down and those emergency services stay up. If you wanted to do battery powered, it lasts about eight hours. The FCC tried to mandate that those facilities have at least eight hours of backup battery power, but it became such a logistical nightmare to get those batteries on the pole. It's about the size of a college fridge next to it. So there's a trade-off between aesthetics and, and utility. Best bang for your buck on utility is beefing up the macro sites and making the policies available to add backup power generators.
So with the movement toward 5G, are we confident that the telecoms are going to be maintaining that other backbone for communications then?
They'll need to. The macro sites aren't going away. They supplement each other. So Brandon mentioned it's a layer cake. It is densification. So that umbrella coverage is going to stay. And as part of the federal government's First Net Program, AT&amp;T and Verizon are competing to provide even greater umbrella coverage for first responders. So I don't see them going anywhere.
Okay. Can we just make sure we're keeping an eye on this and anything we can do? I mean, you know, I like the backup battery. I know the feasibility issue, but keep a closer eye on that and maybe report back on what we're hearing back from the telecoms on this because that's something we can't, definitely can't lose sight of.
And the structure of your policy allows you to quickly adjust if things change.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Can I get a motion?
Oh, I need to read the, the ordinance title.
Yes, sir.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula, amending Title 17 and 18 of the Temecula Municipal Code relating to small cell wireless facilities located within the public right of way and finding that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061B3. And you can introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolution in one motion.
Can I get a motion, please?
I'll, I'll move it.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes four to one. All right, for business today, we have one business item. It's a receive and file on the homeless outreach program annual update. Can I please have a staff report?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, we're, we're actually very proud to present Item 15, which is, as you pointed out, an annual homeless outreach program update, and that's going to be provided by the city's outstanding homeless outreach administrator, Robin Gililand, and friends. So, Gilie, come on down.
Yay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you very much, Kevin, for the wonderful introduction. This evening, I wanted to bring to you a pretty robust update on everything that we're doing and how we're collaborating so, so quickly and closely in the city of Temecula. So I'll start off a little bit talking about the crisis as we all know it to be in both the state as, as well as region. And then I'm going to turn it over to Brian Ambrose, who will talk to you a little bit about sort of how I drug him into the homeless, Regional Homeless Alliance, and how we've really worked collaboratively with our neighboring cities. Then we have Social Work Action Group that will give us an update both regionally as well as our city update. Then we'll turn it over back to me, and we'll talk with our school district representative who deals with the, you know, foster youth and homeless students. And then Community Mission of Hope, Project Touch. Then we'll bring the police up so they can talk about some of their stats. We are bringing in the burglary suppression team up to show you a couple of slides now on how we really work closely with them, and then we'll finish off with moving forward. So this is probably no surprise to any of you, and this is based on the 2019 point in time count because, as you well know, we just completed the 2021. And I'd like to thank those of you who were able to attend that day. I think it's important that you see what we're experiencing in our streets. So we're excited to see what the numbers are. Hopefully, they're better. The good thing that we can say is that we know for certain that in Riverside County, you can see sadly the numbers continue to rise, but in Temecula, they continue to go down. So we are really excited and thrilled by that. I cannot give you the official number for this year yet. The data is being scrubbed, but I can assure you that it did decrease once again. This slide is simply for perspective. You know, I, I go to a lot of community meetings. I show the community a lot of, of pictures, and we're not diminishing our challenge here in Temecula, but I want to put it in perspective. With that, as you well know, many of our individuals experiencing homelessness, mental health is a huge component to that. And this is based on NAMI, and we really suspect that that number is much higher. What we can say is that these are the individuals that have been documented mentally ill. So if they have not been through, you know, an intake process or through the system, they may not be documented yet, yet. So, and 2 million people with mental illness are jailed each year due to the lack of mental health institutions. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Brian Ambrose, who will talk briefly about our regional approach.
I will try to be brief. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I just want to take a real quick minute to tell you where we were four years ago, a little story that illustrates just how fragmented the homeless services were in our cities. Four years ago, I was sitting in the city manager at the time, Rick Dudley's office in Marietta, and we had just received the county report of the point in time count. And in 2016, Marietta showed it had zero homeless. And we were literally slapping ourselves on the back, saying, "We know exactly what we're doing." We were going down the list, and we found Temecula and said, "Whoa, look at these poor saps. They don't, they have no clue what they're doing." That was Friday afternoon, about 3:00. On Saturday, at about 10:00 in the morning, I got my first email from our fire department. There was a brush fire. I'm looking at the address, saying, "Well, that's weird. It's, it's in a retention basin next to Calvary Church, just to the east of the I-15." About an hour later, the church was being threatened. And then later that afternoon, the, the fire captain sent an email out saying, "It was a homeless gentleman. He was, spent a few days, cooked up on meth, decided he wanted to have some dinner, and properly fell asleep. And his makeshift grill fell down and caught fire, and then he took off." So Monday morning, I'm back in our city manager's office, where we look at each other and said, "Well, I guess we had one homeless in Marietta. We must have missed him." And so the city manager tasked me with finding out, well, how did we miss that one person? Find out exactly what happened. Suffice it to say, we are, our way of counting back in 2016 was, was not comprehensive, to say the least. About the same exact time, I got a phone call from Robin Gililand, invited me to a meeting in Temecula. She asked somebody from city of Marietta to come down so we could start talking about this homeless issue. I came down, I was, I was, I drew the short straw, basically, and I became the homeless expert for a city of Marietta. We discussed the silos and also the, the squeezing of the balloon aspect. Marietta, with, with our police department, we'd go into Marietta Creek and tell everyone, "You got to get out of there." We didn't force. Squeeze the balloon, everyone came down to the south side of the border. Then your sheriff's office came up and your police officers pushed them back to our room. Nothing was being done. Nothing at all was being done at that time. And so we came up with a plan to, to take this regionally. We were kind of audacious at that time and said, "Let's go to the, to city councils and see what we can do regionally." With the support of, of city manager Aaron Adams, we went to first to Medefee, then to Lake Elsinore, Wildomar, all five city councils. We brought a resolution, including city of Temecula here, and all five of the city councils signed off on the resolution that homelessness will be viewed as a regional problem and not be handled in silos. I'm going to make a little fun here, but I can't get five city council members to say the sky is blue. The resolution passed unanimously through all the city councils. It shows how serious the city councils are, the city staff. Since that time, we hold quarterly meetings with all of our city staff. More importantly, even for cities of Temecula and Marietta, our police departments have gone out on coordinated enforcement and outreach campaigns. We've come down to Temecula, Temecula officers have come up to Marietta. We're working with the same clientele, and we're trying to get them beds. We're trying to get them services, and it's been wonderful to see the communication. We, we've also have our, our park rangers are talking, our city managers' offices are talking. We also filed for two grants in the past two years and received both of them. One was a WR-COG Beyond Grant, which helped actually launch the Regional Homeless Alliance, which, by the way, is based on the responsible campaign from this, excuse me, Responsible Compassion Campaign from this city council. So the WR-COG Beyond Grant started that, and then last year, we were awarded a Kaiser Foundation Grant, which has been instrumental to our success as well. Now it's time for us to start going after other grant funds and other ways to raise funding. Our biggest challenge at this point is beds. We have no CES-covered HUD-funded beds in southwest Riverside County. So when we're in encampment, we struggle. We need to find a funding formula. Hopefully, in the future, we'll bring forward a funding strategy that, or at least a proposal that I think will get some money from each city for the beds, and we'll be happy to bring that forward to you in due time. With that, I'll turn it back to Ms. Gililand.
Thank you, Brian. With that, I'd like to bring up Aaron Petroff from Social Work Action Group, and he will discuss both the regional collaboration as well as local.
Thank you, Robin. Hello, Mayor, city council, city leadership. I definitely want to thank you for taking the time to hear what we have to say. Homelessness is very important to, I think, all communities and especially to us, my teammates here, Robell and David. We, our, our, each other and our team, it's a calling for us. You know, we, we all started in a different city government homeless services program, and I think there's something unique about homelessness, the street population. It seems like so many people automatically believe that they have the answer, they have the solution, and I think everybody in a way does. I mean, we can, we can and should identify the brokenness of somebody who's sleeping on the street, who somebody's shooting up heroin. It's not a desirable condition. It's not something, it's not an easy, an easy decision to make. It's something that, maybe that decision was made many years ago, the first time they used drugs, the first time they stepped into that realm. But if you ask a heroin addict today, you know, "How can you get off the streets? What would your life be like? You know, let's, with a magic wand, what would you do?" And, and you would be surprised to hear the answer, or lack of answer, I mean, the brokenness that, that people on the streets are suffering from. So for us, again, it's a calling, and we're, it's a blessing for us to work amongst these cities that have come together to say, "You know, we are going to go after those people that are not asking for help," because that's really the key. You know, we hear philosophies from Los Angeles, San Francisco, San Diego, and I hear the same thing. People don't want it, or they have to want it. But you know what? We're dealing with people that are so broken, you know, they don't even feel worthy. And so we have to take a very proactive approach, and we have to take the services to them in a consistent fashion, and with our brothers and sisters in law enforcement. They are really the key component, in my opinion, because behavioral health and substance abuse treatment, they're there. The people on the streets know it exists, but again, they're so broken. They need a push, and we like to, well, I like to say, "We're like mom and they're like dad." You know, we're presenting, you know, we're, we're the loving, caring, kind group, and here's a path to success. And then dad comes in, and dad's echoing the same thing, but dad has some power, dad can, has some force, and will help leverage that person who can't help themselves. And so, again, our push is always, these are, these are human beings that are so broken. They need our help. We have to, as a society, make some decisions on their behalf and say, "You know what? You can, you are not making the right choice. You've foregone the ability to make that choice." And so i- it's a tough fight. We met with RUH Riverside University Health Systems Leadership last week to have that same point. You know, this is, this is not, one of the directors made analogy, it's like having cancer, and you can't force somebody to take their cancer medication. But we said, "No, that's not it. That's not this case at all. This isn't a, this is a person, these are people who have lost that cognitive ability to make a good decision." So here, we, our, our push with the cities is to leverage county resources who provide those services to keep pushing harder and harder. And so we definitely thank you for the opportunity to serve in this city. I guess I'm supposed to talk about some numbers, too. So since June 1st of last year, we've had 66 street exits, 66 people exit the streets of, of Temecula. About a quarter of those people have returned to the streets. And again, you know, every person's a success for us, but it's a continued effort. People, again, they've made a lifetime of bad decisions, bad choices, and so it's not an overnight fix. It takes a lot of love and concern. And when we have a team like we have here with the city officials and law enforcement who are all speaking the same language, who know these individuals by name, know their history, that's, that's how we get to a success. And so we have to remain proactive in, in this community so we don't end up like Robin showed us with San Diego and, and Los Angeles and San Francisco. We're, we're born and raised here in, in Riverside County. We want to stay here. We want to see our community flourish and get more people off the streets. So thank you very much.
So I want to discuss really quickly from city side, some of the current work we're, we're doing at the moment. As you can see, we definitely rely on the relationships. I have found that the successes that we're, we're having are all relationship-based. And so as we move on, you'll continue to see, you know, how that all comes together. So Social Work Action Group, obviously, Project Touch, Community Mission of Hope, work very closely with the school district and the Regional Homeless Alliance cities. Hopefully, you've seen yourself some of our social media campaigns that we've done, all from when to call 911 and how to report appropriately has been a really big push. We have a, a presence at the Continuum of Care now, which hadn't been in the past, so I've been going there for about three, four years. And then I also sit on the Board of Governance. And so that's enabled us to, you know, tap into hopefully some future funding and just, again, building those relationships with those county entities. Obviously, we do the annual point in time count, and then we just met earlier about the Community Development Block Grant Funds, and that has been critical to, I believe, our numbers decreasing as well because we're doing a lot of prevention and diversion services with that. One of the highlights that we've been also utilizing pretty closely is our contract and agreement with Riverside County Flood Control. We are in the process right now of hopefully getting a three-year agreement finalized, and what that allows us to do is enter their property clean areas of debris, and they reimburse us for it. So it allows us to be more timely in keeping the public health and safety issues under control. I shared this quick story earlier today, but it's one of my favorites of the 80-year-old veteran was referred to me from SWAG, came to the Help Center. He was living in a hotel, quickly eating up all of his income. So we, SWAG was doing some case management, found a, a little cute casita on offer up. It was a Navy family. It was meant to be, they, he was literally there. Within five minutes, the, the homeowner Navy vet walked up and said, "Welcome to the family." So $600 a month, he's, he's stabilized. But, but we were able to utilize the CDBD grant to give him that start. So I just love that story. Our Y, community payoff, is, you know, family reunification, and we do a lot of family reunification. And we don't, again, send people off to Nowhere Land. We actually call people on the other end and say, "Are you willing to take them home?" One of my favorite stories is a 20-year-old who showed up, bless his heart, dropped his drugs in the bushes as he walked into the Help Center. But he came in, tears in his eyes, said, "I want to go home. Home was South Carolina." So we called his mom. Mom hadn't seen him in five years and said, "Please, can you bring my son home?" We reunited him with his mother, and she has stayed in touch, and apparently, he's doing quite well. So this is why this is so important. With that, I would love to bring up Mandy Rayfield from the school district, and she can discuss how we really work closely with her.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Mayor, city council. Thank you for allowing me to be here. The Temecula Valley Unified School District takes great pride in the work that we're doing to service our homeless and foster youth. Five years ago, we created the Centralized Enrollment Center, and this is where any new families that come into our district have to go to enroll, as opposed to going directly to the school site. Why, you ask? Very, various reasons, but one of the things that it allows is that we can find those families who are in need. I was given the honor of working specifically with the foster and homeless families to ensure that we enroll them immediately, and I conduct an empathy interview and create a trusting relationship with them. Not only do I ensure proper resources such as backpacks, clothing, and transportation, but I also refer them to community resources throughout Temecula, and the Temecula Help Center is first on the list. The collaboration between the various agencies in our community in conjunction with our city has been remarkable for so many of our families experiencing homelessness. More importantly, we've been able to prevent families from becoming homeless. More importantly, we've been able to prevent families from becoming homeless. I got a call from one of our principals that one of our young students had lost her mother on Christmas Eve. Needless to say, the stress on this family was overwhelming. Mom had worked and even though they were able to pay their bills, money was tight. Now without her income, dad could not make his monthly rent. The first call I made was to Robin, who walked this family through the paperwork to apply for assistance. I'm happy to say that dad and child are healing from the loss of their loved one, but each month is a struggle as they live paycheck to paycheck, as many of our families do. He called me today and he was in tears. He told me that he needed our help. He had paid all of his bills, but he had nothing left for the remainder of the month and he simply wanted to feed his child. I can express to you how thrilled I was that he had called. He knew he could call me, he could tell me his needs, and I could assist in getting what he and his family needed. With the help from Ann at Project Touch, tonight he has food in his pantry and by the end of the week, we will have him set up with Community Mission of Hope with food long-term. We will also be completing his application for assistance with his utility through Robin in order to help make him through the next month. His goal is to keep his child in our district as that is the only stability that she desperately needs. We are doing everything we can to help him. And this is only one story. There are many just like this. The collaboration and support of all of these agencies is remarkable and I'm so grateful for them and the peace of mind that they bring to so many of our families who are experiencing extreme hardships. Thank you again for allowing me to be here and thank you for all that you do for Temecula. Together, we're making a difference every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. I love the stories. Just makes it all worthwhile. Next, I would love to bring up Megan from Community Mission of Hope.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you, City Council and Mr. Mayor for having me here tonight. For those that don't know, we were established here in Temecula in 2009 as, in a response to the Great Recession. There was a need and we stepped up to fill that need. And so we've been doing so now for 10-plus years. We serve over 450 families every month, food through our food pantry. And we're happy to provide food as a resource to other, other nonprofits and other organizations in the area to help kind of be that bridge for people and to provide that resource. We also helped last year keep over 50 families in their homes and we work on homeless prevention. So we were able to do that as well with the help of CDBG funds. And we also are, we see, we serve everyone from chronic homeless. We have chronic homeless clients as well as newly homeless, homeless family and children who have just recently been evicted and living in their cars. And we work hard to get them quickly out of their cars to those who are facing homelessness. And so food is, is a, is a resource that we're excited to be able to provide. It helps offset finances, so that's one thing. And we also have just recently acquired four homes. And so now we have houses that we will be able to move families of low income into low-income houses. So we're excited, we're so excited about our collaboration with Robin. We're excited to be here tonight to talk on that. We just want to say thank you to the city of Temecula. We love our partnership. The Homeless Outreach Team, the HOT Team, has been a huge resource for us. When we do see those chronic homeless that come through our doors and our case managers are working with them, sometimes we do need to call on the HOT Team. Some of those, as, as have been previously mentioned, do struggle with mental illness. And so there is that safety measure. And so we're so thankful that the HOT Team does come and they do help us out in those times that we can keep our doors open to those clients and we can, we want to continue that relationship. But sometimes we do need just that support of those officers and they do come through. We also, as I mentioned, are incredibly thankful for the CDBG funds that have helped us in prevention, preventing, preventing those clients from being faced on the streets. And we love our new partnership with SWAG. The SWAG team, we provide, they bring their clients in and we provide, we're happy to provide food for them so that they can kind of build that relationship. Food is just a bridge. We all like food, we all do it. It's a communal thing. And so that's a beautiful resource that we're able to provide. And as recently, SWAG has helped us with one of our chronic homeless clients provide transportation and help reunify with a family member in another state. So we love this relationship. I work with nonprofits outside of these five cities that have been mentioned and I saw that it's, when I'm in those conversations over this same topic, that I realize how absolutely wonderful that we have it, that we have this partnership because that is what is lacking in other cities whose homeless problem is growing. And so I just want to thank you tonight and thank you, Robin, for having me.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you so much. Yeah, we, we've come a long way, as you can see, in the short four, five years since Erin said, do this, Robin. Next, I'd love to bring up Ann from Project Touch.
And I, I, I titled this, What Is the Face of Homelessness on Purpose? And then the circle is because all of those agencies in the story she's going to share, we all touched this individual.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for allowing us to come and share. And I've been working with you guys a long time. I'm thrilled of how much homelessness has really turned around and we have so many awesome collaborative partners to work with. Project Touch, you know, a lot of our history, being very simple, if you are homeless, you are less a home. So not only do we think it is important to provide a bed where someone can stabilize quickly and bring services around, this next week, we'll be taking on two more apartments will bring us up to 200 beds between year-round emergency and transitional beds. Our clients are not just the ones that we're seeing that can be more challenging, where SWAG has expertise with the outreach, but the single mothers and children and senior citizens and disabled. We're really trying to be able to serve not just individuals facing homelessness, but we want to serve agencies that are helping those. So whether we get a call and work with SWAG or they need a bed temporarily to get someone in more intensive services, or the police are calling middle of the night, have domestic violence or something, we always, or Robin's calling me or, or anyone, we always try to say yes. Whenever we can, we try to take the situation and be able to go to the next steps. And then we stay in partnership. SWAG has been awesome, sending us some people and then continuing to do co-case management. Same with Community Mission of Hope. So we just love our partners. Did I forget anyone? Mandy is awesome too. I love her. So one of the really good examples of a partnership with the Temecula Diversion Funds, believe it or not, a previous, a senior citizen who was a business owner in Old Town Temecula for three years. She had some curveballs in life and found herself homeless. So we immediately took her into emergency, no questions asked. And then, you know, I knew she would be a prime candidate for the diversion fund. So she is stable, doing awesome back here in Temecula and thriving. The next one, Harith. I think I got multiple calls on this young man. He's my hero. He is a Temecula resident, 18-years-old, who has custody of his 14-year-old brother and 15-year-old sister. Yeah. So between Robin with the Temecula Diversion Funds and Mandy at the school district, we took Harith and his brother and sister immediately for emergency motel stays and then immediately got them into one of our Temecula transitional apartments so they would have a short distance to school. He works, he goes to school, and he's waiting for me to call him on FaceTime just to share with you. So he's on standby. So we're going to see if this will work, that he can talk to you. But this one, all us moms, he got our heart. So Harith, there you are. Good evening. He couldn't come because he has the flu tonight. So I told him, stay home. Harith, I'm going to just turn you this way to say hello to the Mayor and City Council quickly.
Hello, guys.
Hi.
Okay. So Harith, you know what? Remind me, you've been with us almost a month or two months now?
Two months.
Okay. And you're continuing to do well, going to school and holding down your job. We're all very proud of you. I was bragging about you. I hope you don't mind. So just between the collaboration with the school district, with the city of Temecula and Project Touch working together, just kind of tell us how you guys are doing now.
Compared to before, way, way better, in my personal opinion. Before I even met Project Touch, I was personally spending around $2,000 on hotels just to put a roof over my sibling's head. And now with Project Touch, I, I have, finally have money to pay off my bills in time. I'm going to add interest to my credit card, just what I was doing at first, just to support my family because I gained the responsibility all at once. So definitely with Project Touch, I have way more control of my life now. I've actually increased my units in school. I've been going regularly. I've been putting in less hours to remove the stress for me. Most definitely at Project Touch, honestly, I'm surprised that such an agency isn't a government agency because I even tried to go to the social services and they didn't really offer me much, although they knew I was homeless.
Okay. And Harith, just so you know, to, through the Robin and the city of Temecula, we were able to stop the gap so that he could get ahead and not have the stress of all the rent and try to help him with food and hygiene. But this is how we all work together and it doesn't get any better than this. When you think of homelessness, it is definitely not just the people we're, a lot of people think of. This is every day, all day. Harith is our hero. We're so proud of you and your brother and sister. Okay, I'll let you get back to bed because I know you're sick. You say goodnight, everyone? There you go. Bye.
Wonderful night.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Harith. Good night. So the face of homelessness has changed. And before Robin gives me my hook, I just say, thank you for letting us share. We're here to serve. I love my partners. We have an awesome team here. So thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Wanted to share that with you just because what the citizens usually complain about is not that. And so we just want you to see the whole picture of we're, we're helping all sectors of the population. With that, I would love to bring up Sergeant Munchaka.
Mayor, Council, City Manager and Staff, I want to introduce you to the Homeless Outreach Team, or the entire team. This is Deputy Abraham, Deputy Punsalan, Deputy Bowers, Deputy Valteria. And I also have Deputy Lasso and Gina, who are assigned to the behavioral assessment team. It's our new team that's assigned to us. We make one big team to respond out there and do outreach in the city. And we are pretty relentless and very busy, as you may know. Thank you for supporting us always. And we feel it and we go out and do our job and help everyone out in the city with the outreach and quality of life as well. One of our main goals out here, as you know, is to assist people to get off the street, provide them resources. We work hand-in-hand with Robin who, and collaborate with SWAG and all the other groups that here did the presentation up here. The, you want to say something on your CBAT? I want, I want CBAT to say something because this is a brand-new team that we have. And just one minute.
Deputy Lasso, we're the new addition to the POP Team. We're the Community Behavioral Assessment Team and basically we handle mental illness. This is my partner, who's a clinical therapist with a county. And she rides with me. We go out and we assess those individuals that have that need for mental health. If we can get them to a place of voluntary status, we can get them there, get them some help for their mental health. And if we need to, address the other issues that go along with that. So we're actually coupling, helping not only Temecula, but we're going out into Marietta and reaching out and helping them as well. We're hoping they get a team as well with their POP Team and we can address this issue of mental health.
Thank you, Deputy Lasso. So we collaborate well with the city of Marietta. As Brian Ambrose stated earlier, we go into the city of Marietta as they come down here and help us out because we know transients work or not work. They go in between cities and down to San Diego and everywhere else. We also work with the Hammont Police Department, Manife, Wildomar, and Lake Elsinore because we know our guys and girls are down there as well. With that, I want to bring up some of the stats that we've done and some of the stuff we've done in the last couple of years. There it is. So along with the outreach, one of the major things that we do is quality of life. We want to protect, number one, the citizens of Temecula when they go out, whether they're shopping at the parks or wherever they may be. So in 2018, at the beginning of the year, we did a lot of outreach and we found that some of the individuals who were out there homeless, were drug addicted or have a mental disability, didn't want to accept the help. They just kind of were coming around and going in circles. So we started stepping up the enforcement because we saw the increased amount of crimes out in the city. So with that, our numbers for 2018 were, in arrest, were 475 people. We're 475 arrests. We continued that trend as of June, all the way through December and continued through 2019. In 2019, we had 644, a total of 1,115 for the last two years. We had in 2018, 138 outreach calls. We also increased our outreach calls in 2019 to 230. So the 400 number that you see there is outreach attempts, meaning when our Homeless Outreach Team went out and spoke to individuals out there, we spent at least 30 minutes with them or more in an attempt to get them off the streets. So we didn't count the five-minute contact or the 30-second contact, hey, how are you? Can we, can we help you out or do whatever you need? That number would have exceeded well over 500. So with 30 minutes or more, out of those 485 individuals were street exits. So basically went to rehab center, were reconnected with family out of state or in-state or wherever. And as Robin mentioned, the one in North Carolina. And also mental dis, persons suffering from mental disability were also helped as well, whether they were placed. And now we have CBAT as well here. So it kind of increases our teeth, as you would say, to help them get off the street and the enforcement. The other thing that we do by making so many contacts is we build a trust with the individual out there where after seven or eight arrests, if it takes arrest because of violations of the law, then they gain, we gain trust with them. We know them on, on a name, face-to-face basis. And they know us. And then they reach out and call us and ask for assistance. And that's how we get the 85 street exits. Anything else? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
I keep hitting the wrong button. With that, I would like to invite Sergeant Hilton up just to briefly talk about how the Burglary Suppression Team, which is a fairly new team to, to the station, correct? Works very closely with Homeless Outreach.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yes, we started the Burglary Suppression Team about a year ago. Basically, what my team does is we take reports from patrol that need a little bit more expertise or search warrants, or we're going to other cities to chase criminals that have done crimes here in Temecula. That's what we do. And we have a lot of resources, one of them being Sergeant Munchaka and his team when we have search warrants or just for information because those guys are out walking the streets, talking to people, and they know a lot of the people that are out committing crimes that my team is looking for. So in that way, we work together. We also help patrol because we take some of the stress off them by responding to incidents that are in progress or taking them over from them once everything's kind of settled down. Because usually we're out and about. We do, you know, we're in Hammont, we're in Marietta, wherever it takes us, we have the ability to go there and chase these people down. And that's what we're finding a lot of. Temecula is a very target-rich environment. It's nice, people have nice things and other people come here to steal them. And that's where we try to take those reports that in our language are suspended, basically there's no further leads. We grab those cases and try to catch somebody or get somebody's property back. We've done a lot of operations where somebody finds their stolen stuff on like OfferUp or Craigslist. And we'll contact those people pretending to want to purchase those stolen items and arrest them when we meet up. So it's a pretty good team. I think we're doing good things for the city and we appreciate your support, definitely. Thank you. These are just some of the property we've recovered and weapons we've seized in relation to thefts here in Temecula. The guns up top, it was, that was actually a guy that was doing robberies here in Temecula and we tracked him back to San Bernardino and he had a stolen gun, an AR-15. The pictures below are actually people that were stealing a large amount of property or items from Target and Walmart. We found all that stuff in a, on a search warrant we did in Hammont where they had taken all, and then they were selling it out of their house. So that's kind of what we do, in a nutshell.
Thank you, Sergeant Hilton. So that sort of wraps up what's been happening. I think it shows we've been busy, making a lot of, a lot of good movement. What I'd like to share just really quickly with you is moving forward, a few items that we've been working on. So with that, I'm going to ask Ashlyn, who is my amazing new staff member who helps me put all this stuff together. We have We have some things we'd like to hand to you first, so before we talk.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So, the folder that you're receiving is the Business Toolkit. This is something that we've been sort of working on for a good, a good amount of time, and I am excited to say that it is finally ready to roll out. We're going to be working collaboratively and closely with Emily at the Chamber. She was gracious enough to look through it, and from a business perspective, and look, to make sure that we were sort of hitting all the features. So, the folder that you just received will be basically the hard business toolkit, and if you open it, you'll also see there's a thumb drive in there. So, all of the items that are located in this folder are also on this thumb drive. Located in the end here will be the items that the, that the business can utilize, talking about our crime-free toolkit, what it, what's in it, how the program is going to roll out, a cling for the front of their business, to claim that they are a crime-free business. We're going to be working really closely with Sheriff's Department and their volunteers to walk through businesses with business owners, and help them see different strategies on safety, and how to address homeless individuals, from both a preventative measure, as, as well as who to call if they find someone who really needs help. There's just some other, you know, Help Center brochures, things like that. One thing I'd like to point out is, we just sent 4,000 of these to every business owner in Temecula. And what this is, is encouraging them to complete the 602 No Trespass Form, which allows our Sheriff's deputies to make contact with individuals on, on their property. So, we are now receiving some forms coming back, and these all went out to all the businesses. And our plan is to do this on an annual renewal, so that we can stay on top of that. When you get time, this is the complete toolkit. Our plan, I think, with, with the Chamber, is to roll this out in sort of a grand style. The next thing I'd like to share with you is the second sort of packet, and what we're calling it is the Homeless Outreach Strategic Model. So, what this is, is really sort of what we've been doing, but we wanted to identify a way that we could share with individuals on how we sort of built what we're doing here, and make it more logical. We wanted to find the problem, you know, identify the root cause of homelessness. The individuals who are living on the streets is not there because they choose to. I don't believe that. There's something going on, like, there's a root cause. Homelessness is the result of the sometimes decisions. So, then we want to talk about how we can implement measures, and, and measure success, because I think that is critical. So, when we look at the homeless strategic model, and I gave you the full, the full list, so you can sort of see it comprehensively, and then also, at some point, if you wanted, we put this nice big thing in here, because here's the meat of it, when you look at that. This is where staff is working really diligently. But going back to the strategic model, so the, the first level is, you and I, we live in a house, we have jobs, we have liquid assets, we have family support, but we're always at risk of making a poor decision. We're not a poor decision. What if we lose our jobs? We're always at risk of falling down to that next level, which we call the identification stage, and we're becoming at risk, because there's barriers. So, as we're going down sort of the ladder, individuals are actively addressing one or more barriers or problems that they're having, and they can include addiction, mental health, mental illness, some sort of abuse, a downturn in the economy, or financial management. So, if you're, if, if you're an individual, and you're living in a home, and you find yourself addicted to drugs, quickly, your priority isn't really going to work anymore. It's probably getting that next fix, or whatever your, your barrier might be. So, then we, we're going down to the early intervention stage, where, you know, now it's becoming visible. They, these individuals, they can't, they can't make good decisions, so now they've rolled onto our streets. They're living in an RV, they're living in a car, they're living in a creek bed, and oftentimes, they're resorting to criminal sources of income. We just heard from Burglary Suppression Team on how that is impacting our community. We say too, at the early intervention stage, it's sort of the sweet spot. If we can get somebody back out of homelessness in that first 30 days of them hitting the streets, their success rate skyrockets. So, we're really, really working diligently to try to find new, new individuals. As you can tell, a lot of the conversation tonight was about prevention. I'm, I'm really big on sealing all those pipes. If we seal the pipes, they can't flow in, and that's where the prevention comes in. So, intervention, intervention stage two, these are the individuals that really cannot control their barriers. I saw, I call this SWAG's sweet spot. These are the individuals that they are awesome at helping get resources. These are the people that are really, you know, sort of just been on the streets for many, many years. It could be 10, 15 years, and they are at risk of hitting rock bottom, or dying on our streets. And of course, if they cannot make decisions, or get the appropriate help, they will ultimately, sadly, end up dying. So, as we, as we move through this, the one thing that I wanted to explain a little bit more closely was, from stage one to stage four, when they're living on the streets, that can take years. It can take years to get there. So, the individual, you know, living in a house, doing fine, all of a sudden, they have some sort of problem. They have family, they have friends, they have savings account. It could take, you know, 10 years before they're down there. Also, you know, homelessness is an optics issue. So, we hear oftentimes throughout the state, that housing is the number-one problem. Housing is definitely a problem in the state of California. We all know we need affordable housing, but with this population, they don't, they're not ready for a house. We have to find other avenues to sort of heal them, before they're ready to be into housing. So, I suspect that the optics side of it is what pushes a lot of the political agendas, because if you can't see them, they're not there. But they are, they're just in a house. So, this was sort of our, our brainstorm of how we really want to look at it. When you look to the right side of, of the definitions, you'll see, this is where we really want to take into account, you know, the current city investment, that's what we're doing. You know, the policies, we're very cautious before we bring you some silly ordinances. You know, we don't want our, we don't want to be handcuffed in the future with, with rules that maybe won't work. So, you will see some that are coming forward in the next few months, that we feel very strongly will help us sort of move to the next level. But again, we do take it very slowly, very focused, and return on taxpayer investment, and just how we're going to make all this work together. And with that, I'm open for questions, if you have any.
Well, an observation, I mean, thank you for what you do, and the Hot Team, and just the community support with SWAG, and Community Mission of Hope, and the school district. I mean, that's really what makes us work. It, you know, the city invests in you, Robin, and you, the Hot Team, and then the community comes around and fills in all the gaps.
Absolutely.
And that's exactly what Project Touch does with the housing, and...
Right.
So, kudos.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Any other, yes?
Any questions or comments?
Comment, answer questions, it doesn't matter.
Just, just, just a couple of observations as well. One of those is, you know, you're, you noted between 18 and 19, some fairly significant increases in calls for service, and so forth. And, and I think part of that, if, in my estimation, is that there's, there's an actual response, right? So, I think our residents and businesses are recognizing that calling you all to respond to this has a, has a positive and, and, you know, immediate effect.
Yes, absolutely. And I think with our community education, and with the rollout of the city's mobile app, we were able to offer alternative ways to report. So, if it doesn't warrant a 911, or even a non-emergency, at least individuals felt that they were heard, and they will, you know, can at least tell us what they're seeing, and we're responding appropriately.
Yeah, and we need to definitely keep up that level of communication, doing an outstanding job. Couple of other things. One, you know, just looking at some of your statistics, I think we're, we're telling the story, but it's a dramatic story. You know, the city of Temecula has seen a decrease in its homeless population, while the region and the state is seeing the opposite effect.
Correct.
Right? And just by my, my estimation alone, we're 86% lower than the state's per-cap. I mean, that is a significant, you know, I mean, just those numbers just speak for themselves.
Yeah.
And, and it's come a long way, you know, since, since Robin, I got to give you all the credit, or at least a big chunk of this. I know you have a remarkable team, but I know you've put an incredible amount of time in all of this, and to be able to work with all these talented folks, to be able to have the resources, and, and again, going back to our, you know, mantra of public safety and Measure S from years ago, this wouldn't be possible without...
Absolutely.
...those funds. So, I just want to highlight that again, that the importance of what was able to done, because, you know, you look at the folks that you brought up here, from all the different organizations, SWAG, and City of Hope, and just, just everybody who came up here and spoke, without those types of resources, you know, go to any other city with our population, and I challenge you to find the amount of resources that are dedicated, you know? And that's what it's taking right now, and you're right. I think the messaging in Sacramento is all about affordable housing, and yet, that is not the full message. Affordable housing does not solve, you know, mental and behavioral health issues.
Right.
And so, you know, so, kudos. I mean, this is just, you know, a very detailed report, I appreciate it deeply. I think we need to work on some of the numbers and the messaging of that, because if we really dig into it, it's a remarkable story to tell. And one of the things I'd like to see happen here is that with our new state lobbyist, and with our legislative platform, I'd like to see us, you know, bring these folks to Sacramento to speak to our legislators, to sell them, this is how it gets done. This is the case study for how it works, because I can't think of many cities in California right now that are able to report out to their council what you did here tonight.
Thank you so much.
So, I'd like to be able to make sure that we figure that out this year.
Thank you, Councilman Ron. And you, you nailed it on the head. It truly is a collaboration. It's not the Robin Show at all. I could not do this without everybody, down to, I have my, my intern, Leith, that I've had for the last year. You know, we all have a fingerprint on, on all of this work, and I'm very thankful, your forethought, City Manager Adams, four or five years ago, to, let's just get ahead of this, and I think that's been really critical. But thank you.
Any other? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Robin, for that presentation, and thank you to everyone out there that's like making a difference. You're genuinely making a difference in our community. You know, I spent the homeless point in time morning with you all, and, and I see the investment that we give, and you speak a lot to relationships building with, in the community here, but speak a little bit about the relationships you build with people experiencing homelessness, because they all knew everyone, and, and just the stories they would tell. And I feel like there's a, there's a story there, the amount of time that we spend, and Sergeant Munchaka actually brought that up, the 30 minutes or so, but could you speak a little bit, just briefly, to those relationships?
Sure. Yeah, because it really is important, you know, because, again, along with the Sheriff's Department, we really do have the balanced approach. I jokingly, with even the homeless individuals, tell them that I feel like I'm parenting teenagers, you know, because I'm like, okay, I'm going to love you, but I don't have to like you today. And so, the one, one woman we found under the bridge at our first stop, actually had been housed the night before. She was in a hotel, and SWAG is very aware of her. We are still working with her, but I, we know her name, we know her story, she's from New Jersey, she's been here for 13 years, you know, we, I, I know her by, you know, I know everything about her, and she was at the Help Center today. And so, it's just that, you know, sort of bringing the, you know, they are human beings, and they're someone's family, and so, we have to remember that. If they're breaking the law, you know, then absolutely, we have to do what we have to do to keep our, the rest of our community safe as well. And, and I do say that publicly. I've got about, eh, 50 homeless here, you know, give or take. I have 113,000 other people that should take their children to the park and not have to worry about things. So, you know, it is very much of a balance, but we love on them, but we also will discipline them when it's time. So, but yes, we do, we, we, we know them all by name, pretty much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That morning was pretty impactful for me, and, and one of the things that I took away from that was the brokenness, and that was mentioned earlier. You unzip a tent, and there's a, you know, a recent, like a recent graduate from one of our high schools, which was, which was shocking to me, and you see, like, well, I just graduated from TVHS, or Shaffer, whatever, but, but the body language, they, they sat down, they were looking down, they're very broken, and...
Yeah.
And we've got a lot of work to do, but clearly, we are moving in the right direction with this team, and just a few years ago, this didn't exist, so it's just amazing what we've built, what you've built, and what you all continue to do and give to this community to, to better it.
Yeah.
I'm extremely proud of the work that you all are doing. So, thank you all, again.
Thank you very much. You can tell we love it.
Yeah.
You know, people shake their head at us sometimes, but we do love what we do.
Yeah. One more thing really quick. Mr. City Manager, I think this is, would be appropriate for the TVUSD City Subcommittee that Councilmember Ron and I sit on. Maybe the next meeting we have, we could get maybe a mini version of this, or...
Yeah.
I love the collaboration with the school district, and bring that forward, that would be great. Thank you.
We'd love to.
All right, anybody else?
I do.
Yes?
I just wanted you to know, you know that I talk about this all the time. To anyone who will listen, and people are very, very interested, and people notice that not only are they seeing fewer homeless people on the street, but they realize that they're being treated fairly, and that we have a very balanced program, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that was, yeah, awesome. All right, Commission Reports.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, briefly, I had the opportunity last Friday night to observe a multi-agency task force serving approximately 150 warrants on 2019 DUI recipients that failed to make their court date. And this project was put together from start to finish by our own Sergeant Woods, and I just wanted to commend the department, because it involved members of the Highway Patrol, members of the Marietta Police Department, over 70 officers, 10 volunteers, and it went like clockwork. And when you have such a large program like that to go so smoothly, I was also so impressed with the professionalism and the courtesy, that all of the officers' interaction with some of people that are difficult to deal with, let's say. Some of the first arrests that came in with 30 minutes, they were three sheets to the wind, and I just wanted to commend Sergeant Woods, Sergeant Greco's traffic team, and Lieutenant Novak for such an outstanding job. Made me very proud.
Awesome. All right, planning.
I'm happy to hear that report.
All right.
I do not have a report tonight, but thank you.
Mr. Levine?
I do have a report, and a slide, I believe. Excellent. So, this coming weekend, we're pretty busy. Folks are invited to the Temecula Valley Museum for Second Saturday. We're celebrating India. Sunday, we have a Carnival of Music at the Temecula Amphitheater. Next Saturday, the 21st, we have our World Down Syndrome Awareness Celebration here at the Civic Center at 7:00. And a small report from this past Saturday, I had the privilege of attending a presentation at the Riverside Women's Club, and I presented some certificates of recognition on behalf of two of our citizens, on behalf of the city, and I had the honor and privilege of providing a certificate to Mr. Gennaro Castrello. He's a World War II veteran. He is 102 years young, awesome guy. And also, another Vietnam veteran, Claudia Tenell. She is a volunteer with our own Temecula Valley Women's Club, and she was a wave in the Vietnam War. So, it was my privilege, thank you for the opportunity, and that's the end of my report.
Awesome, thank you. Public safety, ah, yeah, public safety report.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, and City Councilmembers. First slide that we have is just showing our call volume, and the kind of calls that we went on, from our medical aids, traffic collisions, and fires. 750 for this last month. Next slide, please. Shows where our calls were located, and which of your districts, as well as you can see the traffic corridors that encompass most of our traffic collisions. Next slide. Fire Captain... Fire Captain Hayes, working with CERT class, was able to instruct another 90 citizens on doing CERT, TCC here in the city of Temecula. Next slide. Then, of course, the city fire marshal's office, doing excellent work with the annual inspection program, as well as their construction inspections and their plan reviews. Those numbers are listed. Those inspections include the state-mandated and non-state-mandated inspections that were done in the month of February. Our PR events that our engine companies and also working with the staff here at, at City Hall, with our school events and our station tours, as well as one large display where we use our trailer, making those good public outreach to teach safety to youngsters and as well as young adults. Thank you. End of report.
Mr. Ron has a question.
Just Chief Wyzer, just a quick, quick one, and maybe Mr. City Manager, too. On, on two of the items, you have the false alarm report that you put, put out there. Is, is it possible, maybe at a future council meeting, to kind of look, you know, year over year after we've started doing the inspections and the alarm management ordinance that we've created for false alarms, just to see, you know, the, the success that's, that's been had, sort of, you know, pre and post ordinance? And then just one, going back to our earliest part of the meeting with the public speakers, can we also get a report on the roundabout? And, and kind of let us know what the accident situation was prior to the roundabout, you know, coming into play? Let's go back maybe, you know, three to five years on that and look at, you know, numbers of accidents. And then sort of post, you know, installation of that roundabout as well, and see, you know, what the pre and post. Because it, you know, I, I want to make sure I understand carefully, because the, you know, implication was made that, you know, accidents have increased because of that. But I'm not confident that's necessarily the case. And so if we could maybe take a peek at that, that'd, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
All right, City Managers' report.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of items. I just wanted to commend Robin and, and the entire team on the report that you just received. I mean, really, really proud. I know there's unfinished business and, and we're going to keep our foot on the, on the gas. But the other word that, that comes to mind when I look back over the last five to six years in terms of this socially complex, difficult situation that, that California is facing is dignity. And, and the manner in which we've approached this, this issue, both from the enforcement side and the education side, is, is with human beings, as Robin mentioned, but with incredible dignity. And the other thing that doesn't, that gets lost on a lot of folks is not the person that you're seeing in the creek, or the person living out of their car. And, and you, you got a glimpse of it this evening, is what I would call the less visible family or individual that's on the brink of homeless. And, and the folks that are here tonight, and the agencies that they represent, they are preventing a population from slipping into a whole other demographic. And, and we can't even really get our head around how many folks they're preventing by feeding them, by housing them, by getting mental health, without them becoming another statistic in our point-in-time count. So it's, it's just something I had to say because it doesn't go unnoticed. And I, I felt obligated. I need to put that out there. Secondly, you know, it's been all things coronavirus. So I have a, a short commercial here, because it's, it's been all-consuming. And unfortunately, a lot of the information out there is not good and not factual. So from the city of Temecula's perspective, we're encouraging all residents to visit our city's coronavirus webpage at temeculaca.gov, which will direct you to the best sources of accurate and updated information. As of March 10th, 2020, 5:00 AM today, the total number of Riverside County COVID-19 cases is six of the 133 coronavirus cases statewide. Two Riverside are from the Princess Cruise and have not returned to Riverside County. They are quarantined in Northern California. One is being treated at Elsinore Medical Center in Rancho Mirage. Three new cases have developed in the Coachella Valley as of yesterday, of which two are isolated at home, and one is at Coachella Valley Area Hospital. The CDC and the World Health Organization has published toolkits online with information to protect yourself, your family, your business, your employees, and much more. We have some of those tips on the screen, along with the links. Locally, Riverside County Public Health is the lead public health organization for the most up-to-date information within our region. And we strongly encourage the public to follow their updates. On a positive note, hopefully everyone has heard by now, the staff member from Marietta Valley High School that had been potentially exposed to the coronavirus tested negative, and school reopens tomorrow. Here at the city, we have taken steps to enhance janitorial services at our public facilities, including the additional wipe-down, disinfecting of public counters, doors, railings, et cetera. Currently, the city of Temecula has not canceled any special events or other activities. However, the situation is very dynamic, and the plans could change as new information is made available. The Riverside County Public Health and the Temecula Valley Hospital will provide an update right here in the council chambers on March 24th at 7:00 PM. And again, I just want to remind everyone to check out our homepage, follow our social media for any news and developments or changes in the city's response to this ongoing public health emergency. And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we had a closed session tonight, and there are no actions to report from that closed session.
All right. Anything else from the dais? All right, we're adjourned.